Get started, call this meeting to order. This is the July eighth of two thousand and twenty one zoning board of appeals meeting. Let's all rise and speak politely.
My contributions.
The United States of America, two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every due justice.
Everybody ready to get started? Our agenda tonight has projects on it, AT&amp;T cell tower and Hall Hill Road. The Sander Warren application for an area variance thirty four. We can have a couple of small areas to do after that. Throw five or ten of those stops. Welcome, everybody. In regard to the AT&amp;T cell towers. Agenda tonight, I want to remind my colleagues that our purpose is to review the revisions made to the application. And AT&amp;T is represented here, they will make presentation regarding those revisions. And our story has been narrow, considerable. We are no longer responsible for disruption fatigue or any of that. The only issue in front of us tonight will be ordered out, we don't have to create a variance. One of the setbacks is no longer needed, the revised location. So we just, you know, we want to stay focused, okay? There will not be any public comment tonight. The entire public hearing is just for public comment, and that's the forum for that. So if you're planning on speaking tonight, I'm sorry, but that's the procedure of zoning courts. Take some notes, get your comments, thoughts together, and bring them with you to the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, before you commence with AT&amp;T's application, I would suggest that you set the public hearing now, so everyone in the audience will be aware of it. You can make your motion now and, and set that.
Okay, everybody ready for that? In motion, we set the public hearing for the AT&amp;T cell tower application at, what's the address?
Five thirty nine.
Pardon me?
Five thirty nine.
Five thirty nine.
Wake up.
We're talking to AT&amp;T.
Oh, that address? Oh, I thought you meant the address here, sorry. No, the AT&amp;T is at Sixty Hall Hill.
Okay, so I make a motion, we set the public hearing for the AT&amp;T application, sixty Hall Hill Road, at a special meeting on July twenty second, approximately seven p.m.
A second.
Subol?
Aye.
Palich?
Aye.
Nick Man?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okay, so the first order of business on July twenty second will be the public hearing for the AT&amp;T cell tower application. What? Um. With my brief introduction of what the zoning courts purposes on this project right now, I'd like to give the floor over to Mr. Curran. And.
Not quite, but. I imagine you're filling in the form right, Curran?
Okay.
You may remember me from a year ago, actually, I was here in this very room, the first time we went.
That's why I thought I recognized you.
Yeah, Andrew Layer from Barclay Damon, on the F A T T mobility, yeah. Would you like me to sit down or?
As long as we can hear you, whatever you're most comfortable with. It would be nice if the microphones could hear you.
Certainly, I'll just use that, thank you.
I understand your answer.
L E J A. Well, this, this project has been a while in the making. When I appeared before you last year, we were seeing a couple of different appearances for the proposed tower. The tower itself has really not changed, but its location certainly has. Since I was last before you, it has been moved twice, and we are now at the third location. If you had the original, then you had another one, then we went to the third location. This is again cell communications power, purposes of extending cell phone service for in-car and building coverage for members of the home, as well as moving used by the person that brings the service. The tower itself is one hundred and thirty-five feet high, which includes a fourth foot tall light rod. AT&amp;T is proposing six antennas, an array of six antennas to be placed at the one hundred and twenty-six foot mark on the tower. But we've also left space on the tower for co-location by other tower companies, as is the norm in these types of situations. We first thought, as, as a cell tower provider, are there any other co-location possibilities before you could put this tower? As your law requires, and it's our, our, on the practice, there were no co-locations that could provide the coverage required. That's why we proposed the brand new tower back last year. Since that time, we've been made aware that persons had concerns about mostly tower visibility. That was the key factor, as in most of these cell tower issues, visibility is primary. So there was, the tower was moved from its original location to another spot, which was deemed to be in a wet area by the, by the APA, not a wet land. But it was a wet enough area where the Atlantic Park Agency expressed some, some interest in us perhaps moving it. So we did, and we moved it two hundred feet to the southeast. Now, two hundred feet to the southeast. The rain is mild. Two hundred feet to the southeast, the original tower was located in this location. We moved it to this location, the APA said, can you move it a little further over? We moved it now to the final location, which is here, two hundred feet away. The fortunate part of this is that relocation to two hundred feet, one, it's deeper into the forest itself. This is all heavy canopy tree cover. And it provides screen, in fact, effective screen for this tower. The second thing that we did is actually make the tower what's called an artificial pine tree. So it will blend in with the forest canopy, because it will actually look like a tall pine tree sticking out of the canopy. As opposed to the typical straight, bare, monopole type of fixtures with the antennas at the top that you're used to see. So the antenna array itself will be camouflage by the branches on, on the, on the tower. So with that, with this effective screening here, we believe that it's taking care of any type of visual comments that were made in prior meetings. Specifically from the Sampson home, we eliminated that visual by moving it back two hundred feet further into the forest. Is, it, it puts in two hundred feet of canopy between the two, and really camouflaged it to, to an extreme extent. In your package, you have updated visual profiles, updated simulations. As you know, earlier, a balloon fly was made to provide the background for those visual sims. The tower has since moved from that balloon fly, but for the better. Actually, the balloon fly, the features of the balloon doesn't really do it justice anymore, because the balloons could be seen from certain areas where this tower now won't be seen from the same areas. From Hall Hill Road, from Sampson Home, from other businesses. So it effectively got moved deeper into the forest, and the visual sims you see are based upon that new move deeper into the forest. I think if you look at them, as you page through them in your application, you've found that, in most cases, you can't see anything, because there's too much, too much intervening tree cover to allow you to see anything, much less the tower itself. So we think we, we've made dramatic improvements in locating the tower to an area that it's hidden, secluded, and almost invisible to anyone who has any perspective. If you'd like, I can go through sort of the purpose of how we came to this site, how the, the cell tower system works. There's a description of it in your package, but if you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I could go through that quickly to explain the sort of the essence of how these cell towers work, and why this location has been selected, if you'd like.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll be brief.
One, one thing. According to your topos, I believe it's also considerably lower base.
It is, it is considerably lower.
The tower's same height from the top, most.
It's obviously low, yes, I think somewhere at least twenty feet low. What was originally, thank you.
All right, forty-five feet.
Forty-five, I'm sorry.
So your question was, would we like to hear more about the location process?
About, about the location process and the, the cell tower sort of setup itself. As you know, most of us have cell phones. Cell phones operate on a system, it's basically a small radio device. It sends a radio beam to the nearest tower, which picks up that beam, and then sends it down the tower through some switching gear, and then into the landlines that connect to the, the overall home. And so the rate, the cell tower and the cell phone talk to one another, it's a two-way radio. And those, with those transmissions were through the tower, throughout its landline system. So these towers need to be positioned in a way that picks up the cell phone signal. The cell phone itself is a very low-power device. It, it doesn't generate a lot of, of, of high amount of power to drive that signal. So you have cell phones, to power creativity impacts them tremendously. In a more hilly area like this, you need more towers, strategic locations, to be able to complete the network. And by network, I want you to think of a beehive, where you have hexagons all in position next to one another, arranged in a beehive. Each of those hexagons, in this case, would represent an area that a tower is, is able to pick up cell phone signal. And what the object of the AT&amp;T network is, is to create a honeycomb of, of these hexagons, or these, these areas, so that towers can then pick up signal from an area, and as perhaps a person in a car is moving through an area, these cell towers can transfer signals, transfer phone conversation, from one tower to another, to another, to another, as the person is moving. Because if they're strategically positioned, those honeycombs all somewhat slightly overlap with one another. The problem comes in situations where you don't have adequate towers, don't have adequate coverage, you have illy terrain, for, for example, interference with coverage. And you have gaps in the coverage, gaps, holes in the honeycomb. And when those holes are, are left unfilled, that's when you have gaps, that, that's when you have cell phone signal drops. That's when your borrowers go from four down to zero quite quickly. So AT&amp;T's goal, in this case, is to minimize those gap areas. To try to establish a network of these honeycombs in proximity to one another, to enable smooth transition of cell phone signals ended off from one to another to another, for moving car. And to establish in-building frequency that, that are strong enough, in-building coverage that's strong enough, so when you walk inside your house, you still have cell signal. Perhaps even if you go in your basement, you still have cell signal, because there's a certain amount of coverage you have. Now, if you go far enough down, obviously, that signal's going to disappear. But the general gist is to try to establish enough of a basic in, in-car, in-building service to allow smooth communications, so you don't actively notice those drops, and you don't, you have to actively search for a place where you can't get coverage. Again, this is a work in progress, and AT&amp;T tries to position its towers close to populated areas, start close to well-traveled roads to start. And then, over time, it eventually branches out further and further, to try and get better coverage across the entire area. I know, when I remember from last time, I think there was one of the board members, they have been in, in a place where he had to have two different cell phones, two different services with him, one Verizon, I think, one AT&amp;T. Because on that side of town, he couldn't pick up one of the services. The other town, he couldn't, and the other side of town, he couldn't pick up another. Am I, am I, does that ring a bell?
Yeah, that was me, I queued, Verizon jumped on that, he has what they're related to.
I think he'll get it back now that we're all once this town's. But, but that's, that's how these things work, I mean, you can go from one side of the town to the other, and your service can change dramatically. So it's, AT&amp;T's and Verizon's and T-Mobile's object is to create this network of honeycombs to enable that service to be continuous and smooth. So in that regard, you'll see in your packages, there are, in your supplemental package, we include an updated propagation map. These are these multicolored maps that you see in the package, and these are computer-generated estimates of what cell signal strength is in a given area. So when they do it by color, meaning color means strong. Gray areas and blue areas are very weak or absent signal coverage. Whereas red areas, orange areas are considered to be strong signal coverage. So when they do it for the simple type of, of a colored map, and they do a comparison with the, with the proposed tower, without. What's the coverage with, what's the coverage without, you compare a map by colors, so you have existing, for instance, several pages into your maps here, you have exhibit five. Existing four G LTE coverage. Exhibit five shows you what the existing situation is as far as cell tower coverage in the area. You see various few reds, various few oranges, except when you get down in this corner. Rest are predominantly greens, blues, a lot of gray, and a lot of dark color, which is not, absent or inaccurate coverage at all. That's the existing situation that AT&amp;T is trying to remedy with this particular tower. If I move to exhibit thirteen. This is the present day with this relocated tower. This is coverage that is projected once the tower is up and running. Go on forward, or. You'll see the existing situation, lots of grades, whites, blues. Exhibit the proposed tower.
What's the exhibit number, so we're looking at?
Exhibit five and exhibit thirteen. So you'll see, situation changes dramatically with this tower replaced. All of a sudden, you have a large red and orange areas centered around the tower, and providing coverage up and down the local roadways in this area.
Can I interrupt you for one second? Fellow board member, we, we have sent this packet to our consultant. They, we still have, we got it back from seventeen through eighteen, the same consultant, reviewing the initial application. So we should have that, that later next week, this report, so you will have to, what, read yourself. In case you're. Evaluating this public stuff, like I am, our consultant.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson, he's a professor from RIT, I believe. And, and he has a side business where he assists localities in reviewing these types of cell tower applications from a, from a radio frequency perspective, he's a radio frequency engineer, art engineer, that's his thing.
You don't need to dwell on it much, because the need was, was established.
I recall from last year, yeah, the need was pretty well established for, for the service itself, but Mr. Johnson goes through the reports that are done by our consultants, and makes sure that, that they pass muster, that they're done according to industry standard, and that they present rational viewpoints. So easier, easier check and balance on the technical one. But from a, from a functional perspective, moving this tower to its current location solves one of the problems we had in terms of the variance, because now we no longer need that setback from the property line, which required to be one hundred and thirty-five feet besides the tower, which is now one hundred and eighty-five feet to the property. So it's well, then, plus much more, we already. The.
I mean, I'm, yeah.
Sure.
That, 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 that. I don't know, he's talking, so, on. But, well. One of the great, the original pipeline, or, except.
This is the survey plan, it's also in your, in your packet diagrams. That just shows an overview of the whole site and its location. Versus property lines, and the Donna Baker household, Baker, of course, is the landowner. She owns the land, which is how it'll be based. The variance we're seeking from you is simply a variance from her closest structure. So we're not seeking a variance for anyone, a neighbor's structure or neighbor property line, it's for the actual landowner herself. She obviously is a willing and cooperative participant, so she is an advocate for the variance, because it allows the tower to sit on that property. But what we've done here is by moving this back two hundred feet, we're also moved it back, we're now five hundred and seven feet from the Sampson house. Five oh seven to the tower. Again, about two hundred feet of that is heavy tree cover, meter feet. The original site of the tower was in somewhat of a shivering, if you recall, and it provided more of a view, viewship particularly from the Sampson. That's now been eliminated by the, the relocation. So we're looking at moving this into the forest and creating a new access driveway will actually curve around to the tower compound itself. The leased area is, it hasn't changed really, it's still a one hundred by one hundred foot leased area, housing a compound on top inside that's fifty by fifty feet fenced in. And that compound in turn holds the basic equipment that makes the tower work. It's not only the monopole tower itself in the middle, but it's also got the space for the equipment panels, the switching equipment I mentioned earlier. Those are contained in weatherproof cabinets at the basic tower. And there is, and there are coaxial cables running from the antenna down the length of the tower, running into those equipment cabinets. And those cabinets hook to the underground landlines for the, for the phone service. Also, within this compound, there is a standby emergency generator, which is standard, standard equipment on most cell towers these days. I did have a tower recently that didn't have any type of emergency generation to it, but it was in an area where it was purely for overfull coverage, and they already had so many towers with emergency generators, they just felt they didn't need it. But here, most definitely, we would have it. The emergency generator is diesel-powered, is checked perhaps once a month or so by an AT&amp;T technician that'll come out. Just check the site, make sure there's nothing obviously damaged. If there are any repairs that need to be made, they make them, if there needs maintenance to the, to the generator and the like, generators that tested, it's run for maybe half hour or so, the test it out. But their generator only kicks on, obviously, when there's a, when there's a power loss.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Karen?
Yeah.
Do you know off the top of your head, I believe, there's, there's a code provision to have periodic inspections anyways, right?
Of the tower itself, there is. The planning board will address that, they've been given the, the list of what they need to be looking at.
There's, the, the structural integrity of the tower is inspected on a regular basis, yes. But this is just AT&amp;T's own personnel coming out, just inspect the compound, make sure everything is okay, and to test the generator on a regular basis, make sure that's functioning properly.
I'm, I'm not a surveyor, so I'm going to ask a potentially stupid question, my mother told me, no such thing as stupid questions.
I'm not a surveyor either, so I think, I probably don't think.
Maybe your colleague would know. I was up there yesterday, and the stakes, I follow the four, five, six, seven, and eight. I assume those stake numbers are three, zero, zero, four, zero, zero, five, zero, zero, it's on, shown on your overall site plan.
Could be, they're control markers, so the surveyor makes control marks, so when that information's passed back to the person doing the drawing, they have it.
Right, those same stakes also have the elevation on them, but seems to correspond exactly to the road.
Yeah.
Okay, kind of bringing that up, so that all my colleagues, I'm gonna go pick a one for bill one.
Sorry, I should introduce, this is Kim Reback from Centerline Communications. Centerline is the site acquisition consultant for AT&amp;T. So AT&amp;T hires Centerline to locate these potential sites, negotiate with the landowners to, to get a contract to be able to cite towers at locations. And Kim just, she just helps out with all sorts of different details and, and the like, she, she's a godsend. But she had, she can handle some of those technical, more technical questions related to that. Also related to the acquisition search itself, properties that we're looked at, and again, you've got some of that already in your package. We're obligated to look at multiple properties, and to try to, we have, what established a search ring basically. The computer will tell us, this is a ring within which you need to locate this tower. If the tower's located outside the ring, doesn't do anyone any good.
In, in your original application, our consultant basically agreed that the site search was adequate.
We did locate co-location opportunities in other towers, and from the properties we looked at, the Baker property offered the best bang for the buck, so it's.
So I'll back up a step, for, for my colleagues on the board, keep, keep in mind that basically, what we want to do is decide whether we're going to accept the revisions to the application. So that's something that's our, that's our task again.
And those revisions center upon that relocation of the tower to one, to this location.
Which does achieve that over five hundred feet to the nearest property, except for Donna's house, and Donna is here.
Excuse you, Ms. Reback, why don't you come up and sit at the table, just in case there's any more questions, so that the mic can pick you up?
Right, according to the other surveyor, just shown, a tower closest building is two hundred and twenty.
And that distance is shown on. And that distance is shown on your survey plan.
Yeah.
VA one hundred.
That same drawing also shows five hundred and seven feet to the Sampson.
If we took this drawing, you had the five hundred feet, this is your house. If we were to zoom out, make a circle with the five hundred feet, that's an actually go on three other properties, is that going to limit? Let's say Thomas Reed wanted to build a house semi-close to his property line. He's going to be within five hundred feet of the tower. What is that going to mean for him? You know what I mean? Like, if you take this picture right here and you zoom out and you do that five hundred foot circle around the whole thing, is that going to limit all the property owners that they want to build? Is that going to affect them?
I do. You can't opine on the existence of structures that may occur in the future. You only opine and decide on what exists today when the application is presented.
But does that restrict persons that might be affected?
I can't speculate on what an adjoining property owner might decide to build or not build in the future on their property. I can only.
No, not unless he needed a variance.
Correct.
You would not need a variance from the five hundred foot requirement, because that's imposed on towers, not upon individual property owners.
Correct.
If Thomas Reed, let's say he bought this property prior to the cell phone tower going up the sand and putting a house on it on the edge or going to various, I just don't know, should we have that meeting? Say we're okay with it, or is that not?
Let me just advise the panel, the zoning board of appeals, that your function is a quasi judicial board. You are to hear the facts of the case as presented in its current status. And then apply the law to the facts, or the facts to the law, however you want to look at it. You can't speculate on what might happen in the future. You can only opine on what exists today as presented by the application and the current status of the properties. So could there be a Walmart there someday? I'm just throwing it out there. We don't know. But that cannot alter your decision, what may happen there in the future. Opine on what exists today, please.
That property order would be going outside of the public hearing.
I think this is bigger. For that. It's a reality.
Keep in mind that when this presentation is done after the public hearing, and then we convene again for you all folks to deliberate and make your decision. At that point, I will prize you both the status of the laws that pertains to the town of Lake Luzerne and also the Federal Communications Act. I will give you those two laws, and then you can deliberate and make your decision.
Good question.
Just one. First presentation was made on the question of the noise generator, the recent generator. Or fire generator, which was much quieter. Much less of a disturbance, if that's what they move out. I see this over twenty K up to the piece.
It is, they obviously, as time progresses, they refine their design. There is a new generator that's spec'd out for the AT&amp;T sites that are being built. So this site, since it is not built yet, would obviously then be upgraded to the new generator. I do have the spec sheet for it, I don't know if it does change the noise level. However, it is much smaller and obviously upgraded from the previous generator. That is an option, all those kind of things can be discussed.
All of those items will be addressed at the planning board meeting. What, am I allowed to speak?
You can speak, you are a very educated and accomplished professional woman, you can speak anytime you want.
Your job tonight is to deal with the variance, they're asking for one variance. The rest of the aesthetics of the tower and all of that will be addressed by the planning board. The zoning board is simply to address the one variance that they need in order to forward to the planning board.
My advice to the residents would be to bring out the planning board hearing, if that's still a mission.
Mr. Chairman, I would advise you to limit your comments to the application in front of you and only opine on those matters pertaining to the variance.
I have no questions.
This doesn't fit the formal procedure, variances. I commend our acceptance of the application if that's a work, a reason.
You're certainly welcome to motion to accept the application, but by law, you're compelled to accept it. So it's just an application. I appreciate your consideration of that for these folks, but they've submitted the application to the sitting zoning board of appeals, and it's your legal obligation to entertain it.
That said, I mean, we accept it, it's the application.
This is just pushing the republic here.
You're not approving the variance, that's not going to happen. Yes, no.
I'll second.
Subal?
Aye.
Talich?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Okay, before we move on to the next item, I want to thank the residents of on all hill and AT&amp;T for their cooperation and working together on this project.
Just to remind the folks in the audience, the public hearing will be July twenty-second at seven PM right here. Doors will open at six thirty, it's going to be an open forum for everyone to come up and speak as much and as often as they want and offer as much documentation or evidence into the record as you want. All we ask is stability, that's all.
Take the board for your question, your attention, and I will proceed to you in twenty seconds.
Before we go to the part of the application, there's something everybody is scheduled for. We're just, obviously, also looking at in trying to go to twenty second, but it's precious to offer to zoom in.
I have a question about that. If you're making Zoom available for a board member, do we need to advertise that it's going to be a Zoom meeting for the public as well?
You need to advertise it as a Zoom meeting, but with a strict limitation that the participants have to be in the audience. It's much more effective for the public to come in and support or oppose an application.
Do I need to put that in the public hearing?
Yes.
That it will be available?
Yes.
On Zoom?
Yes.
But only? I'll talk to you about.
Only for, folks can can tune in and hear the meeting, but they, it would be preferable to have them come here and participate. Because of the technology, it's difficult to hear people over the Zoom, as you all know.
Is it okay to do the speaker phone itself?
Well, we've done that, you know, we've done that in the past. If there are some residents that want to, I want to make everything as transparent and obvious as possible. So if we have some residents that are out of state or in the hospital, unavailable, and they need to call in, let's take the call. Always err on the side of openness, is what I'm saying.
And you're right, too, and we won't read it aloud.
Absolutely, yeah. Everybody needs an opportunity to be heard.
I didn't know if they need to put in the public hearing.
Yes, yeah, well, tough base.
Oh, and it needs to be posted on the website as well, correct?
Correct, yep. Correct. Could you come over here and, I want to make sure I'm available for these folks if they need me for this next application.
Our next item on our agenda tonight is an application from Cassandra Moore. Thirty-four Lake Avenue, she's requesting an area variance application in front of your setback porch. Page twenty-two or five, let's see, the table calls for six foot setback. The applicant wants a five point eight foot setback, which is four point two feet, which is about seven percent. So let's go through the application.
I have my question, Sean Moore, here with me.
Of, you have a copy of the application filled out? Okay, I'm going to read it. There's five questions out there, okay? And it is the format we use for discussion. First question. Describe how the requested variance will not alter the neighborhood by impact adjacent properties. Yeah, but the answer is I can't be visible from the house across the street because of the elevation drop. The house next door is approximately two hundred feet away from the porch. I'm going to remind you again, excuse me for repetitions, our purpose is to any comments on that one, Phil?
Maybe explain to them, just so we know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The procedure is you go through these five points, discuss it, okay?
Yes.
And then we determine whether we feel the application is complete. Not whether it's right or wrong, but whether it's complete, okay? If we feel it's complete, the next step is to set up a public hearing, a public chance to tell us whatever needs to be told, and the next step after that is for us to talk about it, deliberate, and then vote on, yes or no. Okay, so we're at the first step right now, which is for us to decide whether we feel the application is complete. Do you want to add anything to that? After that one question?
No, not at this time, I was. I know it's.
Will not alter the.
I don't believe it would, no.
Yeah?
I think it's, the answer's complete. Complete.
It's in there.
Second question, describe what alternatives have been explored. The answer was to be compliant, of course, could only be about four feet wide. Want to add anything?
Well, that was approximately four feet.
Yeah.
I didn't have the exact surveys of numbers back, but yeah, it limited the the use of the porch, so only approximately four feet as opposed to
I believe.
wider.
I believe Karen asked you today if you have a drawing of the front.
Do, yes, I believe I only has one, I only made one.
Side elevation.
Yeah. You got a hand sketch?
I do not.
Can you give us one of the next?
Well, that's, absolutely. Dark, too.
I asked for that. You go. Right there.
If I might add, it's similar to the across, across the street, basically a lemonade porch type. All of it, and it supports the, whether it be railing, right, to go right down. Waterway.
Got a bigger slab?
No, there's not, there's not a, a slab or right there, kind of slab. Maybe the podium, it's set past the slab.
So, question number two. Have you thought about any other way of doing it? Obviously, you thought about more for whiteboard.
So that, the point of making it longer was to full, one for use, but secondly, it would keep the rain, the water that's coming off the roof further away from basement. The finisher, or not finished, but not something that I wanted water coming into, which was a problem in the past. Try to avoid that.
Okay, I'll question two. Yeah. I'm good. Just a variance substantial. Summers, so, do you have any questions on that one, Phil?
Substantial is a loaded word. In this situation, I see a substantial, so I would accept this.
Number four, describe how the requested variance will not have an adverse effect on physical environmental conditions. And the applicant's answer was the footprint, that is very similar to existing concrete pad.
Yes.
Answer.
Number five, is it self-created? Most of them are. You might not like the answer, really, take advantage. Okay, so, do you have any? Should we go ahead and so?
Just for the record, seeker is not required on this because it is exempt under section six seventeen point five C sixteen. I do have to refer this to the county planning board, that is already in the process, I give it the the grace of the next meeting, we're still having their response back to me. And they, I have notified you to submit jurisdictional entry to the Adland Park Agency. So that is in the process of getting that.
Will I need a permit for the porch?
They will need a building permit from the fourth porch, yes.
You said the permit they have doesn't cover the porch, right?
They have an existing permit right now for interior renovations to the house, but it does not include any additions to the house at all. Yeah, and they. Yeah.
On the real?
Subal?
Aye.
Talich?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Moore?
It'll be August, the. The August 12th.
I'd like to set the public hearing for August 12th.
Subal?
Aye.
Calich?
Aye.
McMahon?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
It's on August 12th, which is the second Thursday at lunch at the Public Hearing. All of them can be notified ahead of time. They'll have the opportunity, but that's probably during the. When you're on their service, okay? And.
If you get that elevation line, you can just get that to my office either by email or bring it in and I'll. I'll get it out to them by email.
Okay?
Yes.
If you have any questions, you can contact me, but these are supposed to get ahold of me, it's Karen.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We are not doing any minutes tonight. Small bits. I don't know who's heard a lot, but the town board is. Preparing, I'll say. Contracted to revise the comprehensive plan. Part of that process, they are setting up, they call it intact town advisory committee. They would like to get together eight to 15 people. Four thinking people that want to participate in. Vision, master plan in this book. Will be a consultant, just like it wasn't this one, that will be responsible for the nuts and bolts. But having, having done a lot of study on these fucking towns. Really is very important. That's the master plan, master plan typically. What the forward thinkers decide, what the town to be. Is what zoning is trying to encourage. Just to give. Something that we want more businesses. Mom and pop is. Would be adjusted to encourage that. Make it easier for builders or whatever to. Build a little shop or something like that. So zoning is. Is designed to protect the existing landowners and to encourage communities to grow the way that people want it to grow. So if you're interested in being on that committee, send an email to Cindy Shirley, okay? Great, thanks, man. We, we, you know, looking at you. We probably ought to drag out the list of things we've already stumbled across, we've been. Change. Trying to find my copy. Or five, I don't know. Well, it helps time to start to remember. One was. Roof height.
Of accessories. I have a whole list, much more than what we've discussed. I don't know, Andy has that list, so. Jim, one thing I would like to say, though, I don't need to interrupt you, is that. The comprehensive plan will be one process and updating the zoning ordinance. Will be another process. Probably the result of the comprehensive plan will be that they. They advise the town to update zoning ordinance. It won't be part of zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan is a part of the plan.
Is it going to be part of the contractual obligation of the consultant?
I don't know that. I'm not part of that.
Never is. The comprehensive plan will. I encourage everyone to get a copy of the comprehensive plan from 2010. I haven't inquired yet, but Laura, do we have a digital copy that?
I'm not sure. I'll have to check.
We can reach out to Elon and get one, I'm sure. They're still in business, so.
I, my understanding is when we asked about that, that there was. A substantial charge for any extras to be given out.
No, I want a digital copy to be able to email.
Okay. I don't know. Cindy, someone reached out to them, somebody.
If not, we can scan it ourselves, yeah. We'll get a digit, we'll get a digital version one way or the other, but I would encourage everybody to take a look at it to see exactly what's entailed in the company.
I have one copy in my office. I had extras with members of my boards. So I don't have any extras.
But rezoning will be part of the whole plan, just not done by the consultants.
The eight to 15 members that are going to be. Picked by the town board to be on the committee don't have to be on existing boards. It's cross-section, people of communities, volunteer, part of this process. Karen, I have a question. Moving on, 665 East River Drive. We give the rest with that deck close to the river. And I got my new jet ski, I've been going by there, that is being used.
665 East River Drive?
Yeah.
Is it a deck or is it a dock?
It's a deck.
I will have to look at it.
It was. Couple months ago, boss, yes.
Okay, oh, it's the bosses?
Yeah.
So what, what is your question?
Did they get the proper permit?
Yes, and they have gotten a certificate of compliance from the county.
So it's been inspected?
Yes.
Okay, that's my question.
Okay, I thought this was someone new.
One of the contingencies we made in our approval was that it did not be used until it was properly inspected.
It had, they do have a certificate of compliance from the county.
Okay, so our next meeting will be July 22nd. Everybody have anything?
I have a couple of items. As far as the public notices that I'm going to be putting out for the AT&amp;T tower, I just want you to be aware, I already explained this to the planning board. The zoning ordinance calls for the notices, the public hearing notices to be sent to the adjacent. Property owners and any property directly across the street from the parcel that is asking for the variance. In this case. Because of the response of the neighborhood, I am going to send out the public notices. As is required under the special use permit. To any properties within a 500-foot radius. So there's going to be more notices going out than typically are for a variance. But I, I just. Wanted you to be aware that the planning board notices go to properties within 500 feet. And so I'm going to do the zoning public notices for the variance. The same way, just so that everyone gets the same notices.
So that would be more notices.
Correct.
I think more is better.
Okay, I just wanted you to be aware of that. The other item that I had on my list, I touched base with Jim, the chairman, about this earlier. Just so that the board is aware, when you become a member of this board. Your attendance is required and you're allowed to miss a total of three meetings a year. Without it really being questioned. Now, I understand that it's very difficult to get numbers to be on these boards, and so I don't think anybody. Necessarily. Passes anyone about whether they're at meetings or not at meetings, but. There is a resolution out there that was, and I don't have it, I can get it from the town clerk. That if you miss a fourth meeting, the town board does have the right to question your intention as to whether you're going to stay on the board. Or not. So just so that you're aware, please just make every attempt that you can to meet those required meetings each year. Now, of course, if we cancel a meeting, that's not considered an absence because there is no meeting, but I just.
I wonder.
The other, the other.
Special meetings?
Well, it's still a meeting, so.
Okay, so your opinion would be that that would could be one of the three.
Correct. The other thing that, again, that I try to bring up yearly is there is a requirement that all the board members get a four-hour. Training education. Meeting last year was very difficult to get because of the COVID situation, but they did have things online, but. We eventually, everyone got through and. I did just recently send out one notice to you about. These Airbnb. Short-term rental. There was a webinar regarding that, and I know that there has been discussion in the past about. Maybe addressing those in the town. They're not addressed right now, so I had sent out that notice if any of you wanted to. Join that webinar. Unfortunately, it was on a night that was a planning board meeting. I could not participate in it, so. I will, as I get them, send them to you. I am hoping that some of the organizations that in the past have put together a day that they give a presentation. Hopefully, maybe this fall, they will do that again. Usually in the spring. The Adarndet Park Agency puts one together up in Plattsburgh. They canceled that earlier this year. They're not going to do it this year. They did not do it last year. But I'm hoping that some of the other ones that have been available in the past will become available towards the end of the year. If not, we can always revert back again to those online courses that are given through the state for general zoning and planning. Memberships.
I'll give you the, um, Excel printout for that shortly.
Did you, did you join that?
Okay, they sent us a full slideshow after, like an Excel format. It's great. I'll leave it to you.
That's good.
It's all, that was all I told you, it's going to be up there. But it's all, it's going to come this way.
Yeah, it already is this way. Well, that's all I have.
Do you have a file list? Really?
Yes.